Town of Ravinale Public Hearing for 2025 Comprehensive Plan Five-Year Update is called to order. Roll call, Ms. Wood.
Mr. Cochran?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers? Ms. Singleton?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. So, just to give you a few comments before we open up for the presentation and then your public comments, to try to head off any, come on in, let the record show that Ms. Brown's joining us. To head off any misconception about what this comp plan is, I think it's better to say what it's not. It has absolutely nothing to do with any zoning changes. We're not changing any zoning with this. We're not doing any radical changes to the comp plan itself. Wyatt Stitle will be presenting. We've contracted with Council of Governments, just like we did five years ago, to walk us through this and to keep us legal. The five-year review is required by state code. It's something that we have to do, and it's a healthy exercise to go through. But misinformation about this being zoning changes and radically changing everything in town could not be further from the truth. So with that said, I'll ask Wyatt to come up and give his presentation, and then we'll open it up for public comments.
Thank you. I'm gonna kind of turn this a little bit so I can see the screen do.
Yes, sir.
So much enjoy you people. As Mr. Mayor said, my name is Wyatt Stitle. I'm with the ECD COG, the Berkeley Charleston-Dorchester Council of Governments. We were contracted with the town to do the five-year review of the 10-year update of the conference plan. So this presentation is kind of going to go through some of the changes that were made to the 2020 plan. And as Mr. Mayor said, this is a requirement through state code to do not only a 10-year review, which is what was done in 2020, but a five-year review, which is what this is now. So, a recap of the 2020 plan, so it was adopted, obviously, in 2020. It outlined a vision that focuses on maintaining rural character, managing growth, and then meeting the wants and needs of the community. There are certain components of a comprehensive plan that should be included in all 10-year and five-year reviews, such as a vision statement, a list of goals and objectives, 10 existing condition elements, and an implementation plan. The five-year review will build, is supposed to build upon the 2020 plan, so the 2020 vision, that was not changed. Updates were made to the data. That is a big part of the review is to kind of reassess what the town has done in the past five years. And then we were obviously gather public input and reevaluate the goals and priorities of the town while taking into consideration the recently proved development, potential growth, the accomplishments that the town has made, whether that be through acquiring grants to improve parks, whether it be road improvements, utility improvements, that sort of stuff. And then that way, we can reassess that and maybe form new priorities for the next five to 10 years. So this is the project schedule. So we had started in the fall of 2024. We, and now we are obviously in June slash July of 2025. This has been an ongoing project for at least a little under a year. And we've gone through several public engagement events. We've presented at a few planning commission meetings, and it is all, you know, kind of forming into this, the last few presentations that we're doing now. So the big public engagement event was the Public Land Use Workshop. About 15 people attended the workshop. I believe it was in November. Several questions were asked during the presentation relating to land use and zoning, natural resources, and future growth. Staff facilitated the discussions at three different stations. One of them was focusing on the existing conditions and natural resources, and two of them were focused on the land, the future land use. Sorry, could you get back for one second? So, some of the topics discussed at the workshop, we have maintaining rural character in low-density neighborhoods, creating a historic district along the rail line, a mixed use along US-17 corridor being too vague, and how industrial fits into that, the character of the existing versus the newer neighborhoods, the community facility capacity, mainly the schools, that was a big one that came up, and then clear-cutting trees and only allowing for grading for roads and utilities and that sort of stuff. So all these conversations were had at the workshop, and we took those into consideration when we formed the needs assessment and the future land use map and the goals and objectives from there on out. So we gave a more detailed presentation to the planning commission going over the 10 existing condition elements. So as part of the five-year review, we provided, this will be an addendum to the 2020 plan. So without getting into all 10 addendums, we're just going to kind of go over what's kind of been changed. So these are the 10 existing conditions. The resiliency element, you can see there in yellow, that is a brand-new element that is now required by the state in the 2020, in 2020 is when the state passed the law mandating it. Obviously, the conference of the 2020 plan was already more or less finished at that point, so it was not added. So that's why it is a brand-new element in this plan. But the rest of them have been existing elements for several, several years. So if we, we talked about the population, so to know the population change, housing change, you know, the new units versus 2010, 2020 to now, same with the labor force and economic development. We looked at the natural resources, how the wetlands have changed, the tree canopy, how all that's important and ties into the land uses, cultural resources, identifying any historic elements around the town, and then the community facilities such as the parks, the town hall, that stuff, transportation network. Obviously, there's a railroad that goes right through town, that's an important part of the history. We also looked at US-17 and the major corridors around the transportation network and transit options. And then the big one, which is the land use and priority investments, which we'll go into in a second. So the resiliency element focused heavily on the Charleston Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. A lot of the smaller towns around the region aren't able to invest a whole lot of resources into developing their own hazard mitigation plan, so it's a lot easier for the county or the region to do one, and then the towns can just pull from that any policies or recommendations, actions that are applicable to them. Obviously, the region is a big place. Charleston County is a very diverse area geographic-wise. So what's good for Ravinale is not as good for Lincolnville. So the hazard mitigation plan, or I'm sorry, the resiliency element pulls from the hazard mitigation plan what is applicable for the town of Ravinale. We looked at the National Flood Insurance Program. We looked at the social and physical vulnerabilities based on the CDC data, and then we looked at potential hazards and their impacts. You can see the ones that we focused on, again, pulling from the hazard mitigation So land use, a big focus of this five-year review was on land use. A lot of the other elements hadn't changed all too much, but we knew that the land use was going to be kind of the focus of the, of the review. We look, in the land use element, we looked at existing land use patterns. We used the tax assessors data and did a little bit of ground truthing to manipulate that a little bit, just to make sure that we're, you know, representing, or putting out accurate data. And then that influenced the future land use plan that we proposed in the future land use element. So what went into the future land use element, you can see, is the existing land use patterns, recently approved developments, community facilities such as utilities, the community character, the natural resources, and then the town slash public input. So this is the existing land use map. So you can see that the town of Ravinale is in that solid red border there. And then when we were doing the planning exercise in the very beginning, we, we thought there would be a good idea to go ahead and identify a planning area. That was important in the process because obviously, the town of Ravinale, the character, the people, it doesn't, it doesn't stop just at Ravinale, it goes beyond the borders. So we wanted to make sure that we did an analysis of the surrounding area because that's obviously, that contributes to the town character, the, the economy, the people. So that's where, that's where the red dotted line is. And you can see that the main corridor, US-17, is, has mostly commercial, and, but a vast majority of the town and the planning area is agricultural land use, not necessarily zoning, but land use. And this is the proposed future land use map. You can see that the red solid boundary is the same, the dotted boundary is the same. What is different from last map is we added an urban growth node. That is the dotted black line, or I'm sorry, yes, the dotted black line. The COG, the town, and then Charleston County worked in close collaboration to identify this urban growth node, this boundary. During the planning process, we met several times to discuss what, what would this look like, what would this mean? And a big part of that decision was, we want to make sure that we're identifying the areas that can be developed and redeveloped and put in for infill development, while also identifying the areas that we want to maintain the rural character and the rural nature of the, of the town. And, sorry. Good. So the recent adjustments that we've done since March 2025, we added the urban growth node. We had been in works with that, and we, nothing was kind of set in stone until this, this most recent update. We changed the golden grove from town residential to neighborhood conservation. That was a discussion that we had at the public open house that we took into consideration and then ultimately made that change. And then we expanded the neighborhood conservation across US-17 and the railroad, which is in the west side of town, from the rural residential to the neighborhood conservation. and the urban growth node. So, like I said, we developed that in close coordination with Charleston County. It is a growth management tool that is intended to promote new and redevelopment efforts within urban area where adequate infrastructure and services are in place, such as water, sewer lines, road infrastructure, that stuff, while protecting the natural resources and maintaining the rural character in the surrounding areas. The urban growth node should work in conjunction with low-impact development strategies, the Ravinale zoning ordinance, design guidelines, and other planning efforts to allow for smooth transition, transition from the urban area to the rural area. Some of the updated goals and objectives, I'm not going to read through all of these because they're, they can get kind of lengthy, and there's 10 of them. So during the, the 2020, I outlined several goals and objectives for each element of the plan, so the population, housing, economic, transportation, community facilities, cultural resources, natural resources, land use, and then now resiliency. We, we reevaluated those goals and objectives, identified where the town made accomplishments. We put, we made note of that as a progress report, more or less. And then we added action updates underneath to show where maybe a more detailed action could be, could be added, and we made note of that as well. So these are just the main goals for each of the, each of the elements, so. You can see economic development, strengthen the Ravinale's economic base, increase Ravinale's commercial activity, natural resources and resiliency. A lot of these were very closely related. You can see in the resiliency, improved stormwater drainage was actually from the community facilities element. We moved it to the resiliency because we thought that would be more appropriate. And natural resources reduced the impact on the natural environment through community events and education, expanding recreational natural resource areas and programs. All, a lot of these stayed pretty much the same. We just moved some around, maybe added a few. Expand the, or, I'm sorry, expand the use of the historic conservation overlay district in the Ravinale zoning code, enhance historic preservation efforts, again, move from the natural resources element. Community facilities is one that we identified a lot of complete goals. You can see number three and four, improved trash hauling services. That has been designated as complete because the town has entered into a permanent, or a contract with a trash hauling company. Improved internet services, another one that they, the town has entered into a contract with. We deem those as complete. So that's the sort of the updates that we did when we did our reassessment. And then you can see that we added a few, such as the better utilize town assets for community events and recreational programs. So transportation and land use, so I'll read off the land use one since that was the focus. Continue to develop US-17 slash Savannah Highway as Ravinale's commercial corridor. Require new development to address community needs to reflect the future land use designations and overall vision of the town. And then three, modify zoning districts and regulations to reduce the impact developments have on the local character and, and environment. And all of these are, can obviously be found in the plan, which I believe the town has posted, the draft has posted on the town's website. So if you want to know what specific actions, objectives are underneath some of these, that is some of that the plan has, and it also identifies what the progress updates are, what is new, what is an action update, what is completed, stuff like that. We just couldn't fit all of it into these slides. The updated priority investments, this section had a little bit more of a change than most. So because a lot of the, the 2020 priority investments were complete, we had to kind of come up with new priority investments for this plan, which is a good thing. Obviously, if the town completes their priority investments, then that's kind of what we like to see. So, improve stormwater management and community resiliency, strengthen local and regional partnerships, maintain community character and the surrounding natural and rural environment, improve community assets, including community facilities, services, infrastructure, and historic cultural and natural resources, improve existing neighborhood conditions while maintaining affordability. And then one of the leftover ones is improve transportation safety. So the next steps following the public hearing, we have already completed step one, which is the PC recommendation for approval. We're now at step two. It goes to town council for the first reading and public hearing. So following this meeting, we'll go to the town council again for second reading and hopefully the adoption. And that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, this time we'll open up for public comments. Ms. Wood?
Michael McCarty?
Thank you, Jason.
Hello? Good evening. I'm Michael McCarty, 56 W4 Golden Rice Lane. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Had a couple of questions. At the last one, which was planned at 5:00 in the afternoon, only 15 people did show up. They said there was a lot of public engagement. That's the only engagement that the public has been in. We were told at that meeting, we would get two more workshops. We haven't gotten any more workshops. I have two questions about the zoning district changes. So this whole corridor right here is getting changed to whatever that, that new thing is, which is the highest density. Why? Most of the places already have houses on them. What's the point of changing them? There's only one location that doesn't have houses. This is what we've already been through. So I don't quite understand why it's getting rezoned. The conservation district, I don't quite understand that designation for a neighborhood that has been literally clear-cut. Where are you conserving when you clear-cut the land? So I don't know why that, that neighborhood is being labeled that. You know, I, this is being, you know, pushed through, I feel like, with no public engagement. You know, Golden Rice, the entire neighborhood is against this, or would like more public input before this is approved. Thank you. Have a good night.
Mike Anderson?
There's something in this plan that really stands out to me, and that's urban growth. I don't know exactly where it's to be located, like all the details. However, it flies in the face of the town of Ravinale. I'm 70 years old. I spent all eight years of my life living in Ravinale. And Ravinale's always been a destination for people to move away from urban growth. Most people move here, spend the rest of their life there. And creating an urban growth node is, it destroys that personality. And I would like to know more details about it, and therefore, I think we should have more public input and more information, detailed information before council adopts this plan. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Stephanie Russell?
Hello, Stephanie Russell, 5942 Martin Street. Nice to see everyone again. It's been a while. You know, there's not much more comment of anything that I haven't already said. You've heard, you've heard my heart, you've heard a lot of our heart. I really just wanted to stand here and, and represent that we are here as a town. We are still listening, we are still, you know, we're present in everything that's, that's going on, and we're watching in, in, in hopeful anticipation. We had a great workshop. A lot of what we talked about was definitely represented here. Thank you. Thank you for having it where, I don't know where the camera is, but I know that now we have live streaming again. I've, we've kind of cried and screamed about that, so I want to also thank you for making certain things happen that should have never not been there. But anyhow, a lot of the time, I'm able to come up here and, you know, make public comments. I know you can't respond back, but I'd love to know if there is a time later or during this meeting, if you could really let me know the best way to kind of have a conversation with anyone. So if I ask a question other than email, because often emails are not responded to, I don't know if there's a way to, you know, come up here, have a question, and get an answer. That's seen in public for everybody, too. It'd be great if there was ever a question-and-answer kind of workshop. Otherwise, I kind of feel like I'm talking to a wall often. So anyhow, you know how I already feel about everything. Please keep Ravinale rule. Please don't change it. It's why we're here. We love our town like that it is, and please help represent us.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it. Okay. No, no further comments. Public hearing is closed.
6:24.
It is 6:24. Okay. Town of Ravinale Regular Town Council Meeting Tuesday, June 24, 2025 is called to order. Roll call, Ms. Wood.
Ms. Brown?
President.
Mr. Cochran?
Here.
Ms. Singleton?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Here.
Mayor?
Here. Thank you. Please stand and join me for the invocation and pledge.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed and pure, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy name is kingdom, power, and glory, forever and ever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, everyone. I made notes during the public hearing, and I'm, I'm not going to address any of that right now. I'll wait till we get the ordinance introduced, and then I'll, I'll ask Wyatt to, to come back up, and we, we can address some things. Ms. Russell, I'm going to direct this to you, though. My door is always open. My cellphone is on the website, on the town website. I'm more than happy to sit down and talk with you at any time, and anybody in this room, anybody in this town. I have complete transparency when it comes to that, so please reach out to me. Other than that, we have no recusals or conflicts of interest tonight. We've got meeting minutes from May 27, 2025, regular town council meeting. It was council's pleasure regarding minutes from May 27, 2025. Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Give a second. Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Any further discussion? No further discussion, we'll call for a vote.
Ms. Brown? Hi. Mr. Cochran?
Hi.
Ms. Singleton?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Here.
Mayor? What did I say?
Yes. Okay, very good. Feels like we're getting off to a rough, rocky start. Reports from staff and officers, we have no report from town attorney tonight? No report. Charleston County Sheriff's Office, Lieutenant Wade?
Chief, the deputies have been busy out about doing best they can, trying to do traffic stops, getting out with the public. We did have multiple drug seizures, almost 16 grams, but they were out there doing multiple traffic stops of that. They had two DUIs, one off in a traffic accident. They did get out with, finally, the traffic, caught somebody trying to cut a trailer off in a parking lot, so we did lock up one person. Hopefully, detectives can figure out the other trailer. I think we've been three or four in the past six months to another lot. Aside that, there's not much else to report. I think they're trying to do, I'm gonna go to that truck and get them.
Thank you for taking my text on Sundays.
I love it.
Right. Clark Treasury report?
I do not have anything to add. The financials were not included in your packet. I've been in and out of the office dealing with a family medical emergency, so I hope to have those to you at the workshop, which will likely be scheduled soon.
Okay. Thank you. Planning and zoning director, Mr. Harrod?
Not much to report, just continuing with what we're doing. We have some more, what's the more attorney adds, we're gonna be pretty busy subdivisions in these offices.
Okay. And subdivisions can mean two houses. Very good. Town code enforcement officer?
Good evening, everybody. Nothing else to report except for what's highlighted in.
Ready to report. Thank you. Facilities maintenance manager?
Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Nothing other than what's already in the back, sir.
Thank you. Good work. The school board did get hung. If you haven't looked at it, go down there, it's really impressive. Jason's getting power hooked up to that soon, so we'll be fully ready for the upcoming season. Thank you, Jason. Reports of commissions, boards, and committees. Sewer advisory board, no meeting, and the next one will be to be determined. Planning and zoning commission, recent meeting on June 5. Eric, you want to speak to that meeting? Site plan?
Yeah, we did a site plan review for a commercial building along 17, and we had the first introduction of the comp plan, the plan update. The site plan was approved. What is it? It's Eden Air Complex.
Yes.
And there's rental space in that building for other businesses.
Okay. Thank you, sir. There's an upcoming meeting on July 17, and then Board of Zoning Appeals has had no recent meeting, and they've got an upcoming meeting on July 8. All right. Old business, we had tabled a special event request at 5806 New Road. If we're going to talk about that tonight, I need a If we're going to talk about that tonight, I need a motion to remove that from the table.
I, Cora, send to make a motion to remove the from the table the special event requests.
Thank you, Ms. Cora. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Call for a vote?
Ms. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Cochran?
Aye.
Ms. Singleton?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Okay, so that is removed from the table. Moving on to new business. Special event permit request at fifty-eight oh-six New Road. That's TMS number one sixty-eight zero 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 six. This is a special event request on the Frazier property. Mr. Frazier, are you here? Want to come up? Thank you for showing up. We need to address the stipulations or the requirements that you had. Homework to get some answers for us. So let's start with the elephant in the room, which is the alcohol sales.
So I talked to the Department of Revenue, and they said unless I have a license, I can't sell.
So you can't have alcohol in this party?
Yes, sir.
You're going to move forward with it?
Yes, sir.
With no alcohol?
Yes, sir.
And we're going to enforce that? No Kulas are coming in?
Yes, sir.
And you're still going to charge to get in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What about the insurance situation? I mean, I've got what you provided, but this is pretty much just a document printed off of the internet. It's got other requirements to go along with it.
Was the quote?
But there are a number of eligibility questions that I just want to make sure you know. You've still got some work to do on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Attorney, you got any other questions?
No. The insurance, the alcohol was a big deal.
Okay.
People not going to serve alcohol.
It can't be allowed. They can't bring it in a Kula, can't bring it in a flask.
How are you going to enforce that?
You plan to use the Charleston County Sheriff's Department?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
I'd like to say something. I know I haven't been in all the conversation. I just think this is something we shouldn't do. I think it's something we shouldn't allow. I think it's too many people. I think when we planned for two hundred people with and without alcohol, we were trying to, you know, provide a happy medium for people that want to get together with crowds. And if they had served alcohol, be responsible about it. But, you know, from the first time I heard something about five hundred people gathering in the town of Ravinale, I just think that's a little strong for our little town. I just think it's the wrong message to send. If we start it now, we'll never be able to stop it with anyone else. No reflection on you whatsoever. It's just, it just, it stinks. Something about it really stinks to me.
I don't see a problem with bringing traction to the community. It's my thought.
Well, we all have our thoughts and our opinions. My request would be, is there any way, if we were to find one ounce of alcohol on that property, can we shut it down immediately?
Well, I think we're going to have to lean on the Sheriff's Department to do that.
Lieutenant, can I ask you a question? If we allow this gentleman to entertain five hundred people in the town of Ravinale, and he's not going to serve alcohol, he's not going to let alcohol come in there, we're going to have sheriff's deputies on that property. Are we able to shut that thing down the second we find one ounce of alcohol being used or consumed on that property?
I'd have to check the slick or slavery that wants to fall around.
Yeah.
Should be able to shut it down.
Well, I'd like for us to explore that. I mean, we've got to run a hard line on this. That's a lot of people. There's more people if it gets out of hand. We can't control. And the other thing I'd like to see is how many officers do you plan on having in this?
How much it requires?
I think we should have at least two per a hundred people.
Well, I was going to get officers that have regular security licenses.
No, I think we, I'd like to see two sheriff's patrol for every hundred people.
I mean, what are the requirements? You're trying to tell me what you want, but what are the requirements?
Mr. Frazier, quite frankly, we don't have an ordinance that governs this specifically. And that's something that's set up that we're going to get to the bottom of. We've been leaning a little bit on our general assembly type, and that's really not geared for a for-profit type situation. That ordinance is written for church socials, family gatherings, et cetera, where you're going to have a large group of people outside. One thing that happens in a town when it starts to grow and prosper is you... I hate to be reactionary, but we've got to be reactionary to some of these things. And this is one of them that's at the top of the list, because we do need a clear-cut ordinance that gives you guidelines as well as the town of Ravinale. We know what to expect. So we're in the process of working on that. But right now, we've just got to, you've got to be a little flexible with us, and we've got to be a little flexible with you.
I was flexible last time, and I asked y'all to give me everything I need. Now, I feel like y'all just giving me the runaround.
Well, I'm sorry you feel like that. And we're not giving you the runaround. We're trying to make sure that we're protecting you, the town, and all the neighbors. This does back up to a residential area, and it's important that we respect that, but we respect you as a property owner as well. But I, you know, the number of deputies, we usually default. When we don't have a clear-cut ordinance on something, attorney, we usually default to what Charleston County does to give us guidance, and that's what we'll do in this situation. So I think if we can just sit down with Eric, you'll get involved and do some research for us and tell us... Because the number of deputies is important. How much security is important. And all those things need to be in a special events ordinance that we've got to work on. And it's at, like I said, it's at the top of the list to handle, because this is something that puts all of us at risk from a liability standpoint. So we want to make sure we do this right.
And I want to remind you, when we allowed this maybe to start a couple of years ago, we actually were offering an olive branch to your father, I think, maybe Willie Junior. And we were, we actually had a happy medium, allowing two hundred. Now, you want five hundred. Next year, you'll want a thousand. It's just, it's got, I think it needs to stop right here.
I'm going based off of your policy. It says five hundred on your application.
Right.
That's why I put five.
Okay, I got you.
So that's young.
But you know, when you have something like this, you've got to go and work with the town.
That's what I'm doing.
Okay. All right. I mean, your attitude seems a little, you know, like you're a little frustrated, and maybe I can understand that. But we're going to make a decision what's best for the town of Ravinale. I will tell you that the last time there was a thing there with the two hundred people permitted, they had people pulling up Old Cameo Lane trying to find the event. They had to call the police. They were sitting in a house at eleven o'clock at night, and they couldn't watch a movie together inside a house because of the noise. So what you're working with here, you're trying to span something that doesn't have a very good track record as we speak, okay?
Any other comments from council?
I think, you know, like you said, he was among the number of people who's going by when we got on our orders. But, you know, for a town itself, and a growing town, and he's going to put on an activity for the town itself. And other locations around the county handles different, have these function on affairs. So, but it sounded like we tried to prohibit it also than just, as we gave in all the ranch earlier, before in the past, but sounded like we tried to prohibit it, not have anything at all. And I think we are, in the county itself and in the whole rural country area, there's different events and stuff that have been happening all over the place. The amount of people and stuff varies from what you hear from when the event is advertised and the event that after it happened, how many people have been there. So I think we should, as a town itself, if somebody want to put on an event for the public and for the town. I think, you know, yeah, we need to have an ordinance already in place, and which was brought up several years ago, that we worked on that and never was done. So I think we're doing Mr. Frazier, and then justice by, you know, being negative towards him putting on his event. And we ourselves hadn't done any work to put an ordinance. So we can't fault him, and I think we fault ourselves also then, kind of fault him.
I agree. I take responsibility for us not having an ordinance in place now. And it's, again, I'll say for the third time, it's at the top of our list. It was on the workshop's agenda that got canceled the other night due to weather, but we will work on that. Nevertheless, Ms. Brown?
What hours are you anticipating happening?
Two to eleven.
Two to eleven?
Yes, ma'am.
And I just have to ask, why so late since it's a family event? Why would it?
Well, that, I basically went by the rules and regulations y'all had. I think you said no later than eleven, so.
So when you say eleven, everybody's going to be cleared out by eleven?
Yes, ma'am.
So you would probably end a little earlier?
Around ten o'clock.
So that everything was cleared out?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we do have something about no amplified music after ten PM, right?
In the town?
Yeah.
We do. So if you shut it off at ten, you could be out by eleven.
Is there any way I can get all y'all rules and regulations for the event?
Again, I don't mean to be repetitive, but we don't have a set ordinance for these special events yet, which is going to govern all this as well as where you can have them.
Yes, sir.
The assembly, which is what we've been kind of going on, is really not meant for this, for a for-profit type situation. And we're going to fix that in the next two months.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Okay. So if we're going to vote on this, I need a motion to approve the special event request at fifty-eight oh-six New Road.
I, Cora, send to make a motion that we approve this event to be held at fifty-six New Road.
Okay. We've had discussion out of order, but again, I'll open up for any more discussion.
I'd like to have the two officers per hundred people, Charleston County Sheriff's Department.
Mr. Frazier, would you be willing to sit down with me?
Yes, sir.
And let's come up, and you can be a test case for us to develop what will be the beginning of a proper ordinance for the town of Ravinale?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And maybe talking about the security, hours of operation, when the music's got to stop, all those things. If you'll be flexible with me to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's fair enough. Any further discussion? All right, no further discussion. We'll call for a vote.
Ms. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Cochran?
Aye.
Ms. Singleton?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. I'm holding to it now.
Yes, sir.
I'm a little limp for you. Thank you. Call my office if you would, and let's schedule some time for United City Hall.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You bet. Moving on. First reading of ordinance zero-three dash twenty-five. Adoption of the twenty-twenty-five Town of Ravinale Comprehensive Plan, Five-Year Plan. Was council's pleasure.
I so longed to approve the Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Get a second?
I, Cora, send to make a second.
Discussion?
I have a discussion.
Wyatt, come on up, please.
Mr. Wyatt, do you discuss in this plan of growth, the area ruralizing?
Yeah, so we do talk about the population projections, but we focus more in the, in the town. So we took the entitlements that have, has been recently approved by the town council. And then we did a very simple calculation. Obviously entitlement, number of units, times the median household size, and then we tried to project what the household income, or the future population growth would be. But that's just for the entitlement areas. If you want to do something for more, for the rural areas, that's something that we can look at, but that, it can be a guessing game, right? Just because if you want to do like a build-out scenario, that's something that's more done in a ten-year update. And that can also help with, it's done usually with the capital improvement plan and stuff like that.
So that's what the growth of, for instance, where I live, it has grown because it's on the main highway. But I'm still able to burn trash in my yard, because that's my yard, my property, in my town. The growth would steal that from me, wouldn't it? If so much growth is coming, would that still be feasible for me?
To burn trash in your yard?
I mean, if it's, if it's my property.
As long as it meets the codes, then you can do, you can do it. Now, people complain.
But I'm saying, but if it's growth, how would that affect where I live?
If that, just like anything, so whether it's growth or no growth, if somebody wants to, like, I really don't think that you should be doing that on your property, they can obviously put in the paperwork or the complaint to the town, and then they'll look at the ordinance, be like, yes, you were able to do that, no, you're not. But that's regardless if there's growth or no growth. It's just obviously, there's more people, and there's more...
So the more people we get, the less we can control our property?
No, not necessarily. It's just the... The more that you need to be mindset of your neighbors. Just like you don't want somebody to have a pig farm on your, on their property, make your property smell. You, it's just, you know, it's a community, right? Everyone wants to scratch each other's, our neighbor's back. You just need to be mindset of that. But that's in any town. That's not Ravinale specific. That's in any community. That's just, you know...
Limited, too.
Yeah.
Wyatt, would you?
I hope that answered your question.
It helps a little bit.
Would you talk about the urban growth node? Because I think there's some confusion that this is something new that the town of Ravinale is doing.
Yeah, so the urban growth node is, through a conversation with the Charleston County Planning Department, we met with Councilman Boykin. That is something that's kind of evolved in relation to their urban growth boundary that they've adopted. I think it's been several years that they, that Charleston County, most municipalities in Charleston County has adopted that as the urban growth boundary. That is a boundary that can be changed, right? If the council decides, or I'm sorry, the county commissioners decide to be like, we want to move it, then that's what will happen. As part of the growth in Ravinale Hollywood area, it makes sense to kind of designate an area that is intended to be developed, redeveloped, infill development, while also identifying the areas that are intended to be, the rural character being maintained. So would you mind going back to that? Oh, that's the, that's the others.
Maybe for some further clarification, if I can jog the memories around the table and in the audience. The Spring Grove Development is what's created this urban growth node. Right now, the county's urban growth boundary is Rantols Creek. But yet, they've gone beyond the town of Ravinale and have approved the Spring Grove Development, which is a form-based zoning that has a lot of everything in it, including an industrial park on New Road, including housing, retail, commercial, et cetera. That is already in place. All we're doing with this update is recognizing that that's there, and it's our neighbor. So this is nothing that the town of Ravinale is doing to create. It's already there.
And to kind of piggyback what Mr. Mayor was talking about, that was the conversation that we had is the entitlement, there's, it's entitled for the X amount of units that they're entitled for through the county. And the urban growth node identifies the areas where that growth can occur. So you can see on the screen that the dotted black line, I know it's kind of hard to see this scale, follows the yellow boundary, even though that, that Spring Grove track is... Oh, yes, I'm sorry. So you can see the black dotted line, you know, follows here and goes up and around, includes this yellow area right here, even though the Spring Grove track is this, you know, I'm generalizing. It's a huge area of town, or adjacent to town. The urban growth node is intended to choose, or to identify the area where the town and the county wants this growth to occur. So the infrastructure is in place, or is planned to be in place, for this area right here. And then this all, this area is intended to be maintained as the rural area. So it is a growth management tool that the town, the COG, and the county has discussed to make sure that the areas that make Ravinale's character, that this rural area that kind of surrounds the town, is maintained, while also acknowledging that this growth here, it's entitled. It's just a matter of when they actually enact on that entitlement. So that's what the, that's what the... Um, so that's what the, um, that's what the, kind of the intention of this was, is to try to get a step ahead of the growth and start to have a conversation of where that could happen, instead of just letting, um, Mr. Mayor mentioned it ear, uh, earlier. Instead of being reactionary, this is supposed to be more of a proactive, um, growth management tool. And just like Charleston County restricting the growth with their urban growth boundary, this is just a little bit smaller scale, the urban growth node, um, just kind of helping the Town of Ravenel have a little bit more control, um, in where the development can happen. So that way, you don't see little pockets of neighborhoods everywhere, it's more controlled where the infrastructure could be, where the infrastructure is in place.
And Wyatt, if you'd point out the spring, uh, the, uh, Hillcrest community, which was a part of that urban growth node.
Yeah, this?
Right, that whole yellow section there, yes. So that was a part of the hole that was sold off, but it came with entitlements. Entitlements mean they can do it, it's there. They were entitled to fourteen hundred units, if you'll remember, on that piece of property. The town annexed it and negotiated it down to three hundred and eighty-one. So that whole rest of that yellow is entitled to an awful lot. And we're just trying to get our hands around, heads around what the county has planned for that. So we don't have, we don't get all the.
So you know, but Kane Bay, for example?
Yeah.
Developing this entire area, it's a little bit more controlled. Not, not Kane Bay.
And Wyatt, to, to answer Ms. Cora's question, the, the Comprehensive Plan does not rezone anything.
Correct.
Comprehensive Plan is a planning tool so that if somebody comes in to rezone property, the Planning Commission then looks at this tool and says, this is within our Comprehensive Plan.
Correct, so the, the Comprehensive Plan is a, um, a guiding document, I'll say. It has no legal authority over anything, um, whereas a zoning ordinance obviously does. So the Comprehensive Plan is often used to help the decision-makers, Planning Commission, Town Council, make, uh, it informs their decision, and the zoning ordinance, the capital improvement plan, the town budget, those are the implementation tools that the town can use to, um, implement the policies, the guidance, the recommendations from the Conference Plan.
That'll change it.
So nothing, uh, nothing is, we're not saying that this entire area is going to be neighborhood conservation zoning, that's just the, the character of the, the area we want to say is, um, reflecting a neighborhood conservation character. Um, and then the zoning, uh, whether that be, I think, R one, R two, R three, that's where, that's where the, uh, the difference is. This is not, this is just kind of the character of what the area should be. Um, and then, um, Town Council, Planning Commission will use this to inform, um, future decisions.
Right.
Or not.
Right. Thank you. Very good. Any further questions from council?
You're saying that the county and the town, the town itself, um, as of how to change whatever.
The, the town really doesn't have any control over.
I, um, I'm, um, I'm a little confused, I need a little understanding on, um, the change, you know, Golden Grove from resident, Town Residential to Neighborhood Commercial, such as the gentleman mentioned, what Rice Hall earlier. What's the difference, what, what's the difference from achieving from a residential to neighborhood conservative?
We've changed the names of the designations.
So during the, um, Public Open House, um, that was a question that, um, originally, the Golden Grove area was the same, um, designation that Town Residential. Um, and the, um, the discussion, somebody brought up like, well, that's a different character than what, um, the other Town Residential neighborhoods are, just feel like, right? That's a newer development, it has more suburban-style, um, uh, looks to it. So we, um, that was a, um, suggestion from one of the, um, attendees of the Public Open House. We discussed it with the town, and that was the direction that we're like, yes, that makes sense. Um, so if you go into the, um, the implementation plan, it discusses the, um, intended uses, uh, or designations, the character of each of those. And while it is very similar, there are just a little bit, um, there's slight differences in, um, mostly the future, um, of those areas. The neighborhood conservation obviously has a little bit more focus on, um, conservation development practices, um, conservation subdivision practices. That is something that I believe the town is already doing for, um, T Grove, Preserved, um,
T Farm?
Preserved Ravenel, T Farm, yes, I'm sorry. You're already implementing those conservation subdivision practices, or that's just, we're, we wanna make sure that that's reflected in the future lands now. Whereas the Town Residential, we want to, um, promote more traditional town, um, character, um, patterns, whether that be streets, whether that be, you know, maybe a little bit denser of areas, maybe mixed-use residential, having a duplex right beside a single-family home, right beside another single-family home, just having a little bit more of that town character. And that's why you can see that they're mostly centered in, uh, mostly focused in the center of town. Whereas the neighborhood conservation is obviously on the outskirts.
Yeah, it didn't rezone anything.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I thought, oh, the rezoning, I'm not going for that. But you're saying that, but the new development and anything that comes in, this would, this would apply?
Uh, correct.
The town would try to apply this?
Yeah, so, um, it does not, so, um, it does not matter the zoning, um, because this is the, talking about the character. So if, um, say R one fits the character of whatever area you're talking about, or maybe R three fits the character, it is, this is just a guiding document to, um, help inform your decision of what zoning should be in this area. So in the, um, rural living, maybe that, maybe that is agricultural zoning, maybe that's R one zoning, where in the Town Residential, maybe that's R two, R three, stuff like that. Or maybe it is still R one. Um, it, it, it all depends on how you interpret the character and how, um, how you enact this, um, kind of vision of what you want the town to be in the future.
Yeah, I kind of along with that understanding, but what about the development that's already, the residential area that's already developed and started, uh, like Rice Hall, instead of Golden Grove, nothing has been done yet?
It's just, uh, we wanna make sure that we're identifying, um, areas that are currently like that, cause we wanna make sure that they're maintained that way. So that way, if we, um, have, uh, if we do put it as Town Residential, that's a totally different character. We wanna kind of make sure that we're, um, putting like, develop, uh, similar character developments in, uh, the same designation. So that way, if somebody does come in, there's like, oh, this is this, um, development, this is the character we wanna kind of mimic, and then, you know, it's kind of a sorting as a precedent, um, situation. Does that make sense?
Is, is it safe to say that the, the designation changes that, that we've got in this document doesn't really have any changes on the type of zoning we've gotten in different areas around town now?
Correct, so that is something that, um, if the town decides to, um, take the future land use map and they, um, say that, uh, everything in the rural living changes to whatever you decide. That, uh, that is something that is like the next step. That's how you implement the policies and recommendations of the comp plan, is by, um, making zoning changes, making land development changes, amendments to the, the ordinance. But that's something that also doesn't have to be done. Most of the time, it's, um, that's what is intended to happen, but, you know, it's zoning ordinance changes, um, it's a big, it's a big endeavor. So, um, we try to put in as many policies in here that, um, the town can enact on without going through this deep process of, of.
But we wouldn't take a Hillcrest, Dear Horton neighborhood and put on Martin Street?
Yeah.
Okay, that will, that wouldn't happen under these guidelines?
Correct, as long, it, it, um, because this is not changing the zoning, this is just what the, the intention, the character of it is.
I'm talking about the character of that neighborhood would not fit on Martin Street.
Correct, yeah.
So would adding the zoning make a, make it a better plan?
Separate.
That has been done in the past, but it makes it very murky, um, because it, a lot of, right now, we're, um, a lot of the conversations we're having is confusing the land, like this future land use designations with zoning. By adding those in there, we are, you know, kind of mucking up the waters. We wanna make sure that this is, um, a, this is a policy document, not a regulatory document. Now, um, when you, uh, look at the, say, rezoning for, from R one to R two, that is something that the, um, staff would provide, be like, all right, this is in neighborhood conservation. The character says this, that zoning change fits with the character, so that's, you know, plus one score. It does not fit minus one score, whatever the, the process is. That is, adding the zoning has certainly been done in the past. I just, we, we tend not to, um, recommend that just because it can really confuse people and make the whole conversation about zoning rather than, you know, the, the policies and recommendations. Zoning is a totally different beast of a, of a plan, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one more, though.
Yes, sir. No, that's what this for.
Yeah, um, what do they, how, how do they come with the numbers, you know, uh, for housing, affordable housing and, um, and the economic development? And economic, well, we got the median household income, it's seventy-two thousand five hundred. Uh, where do, and, um, affordable housing, uh, cause I mean, there's different years, and they, you say that at eighty-four thousand. I don't know one in the Town of Ravenel that's selling for eighty-four thousand, though.
So a lot of the, the data that we pulled was from the U S Census, the American Community Survey. So, um, the median household income, um, that, those were, those are numbers reported by the Census. Um, and we just look, we just do a comparison between, say, twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, or, uh, twenty-ten to twenty-twenty-three, I forget what the exact years are. We just do that comparison and draw some conclusions saying that, all right, the median household income, um, increased by fifty percent, but then the median home value increased by eighty percent. So obviously, we can make some, um, in, some, uh, conclusions from that. Just like the, um, the Census also reports, the number of people cost burdened, which means that, um, you're paying more than thirty percent of your monthly income towards housing. HUD determines those, um, people as cost burdened. Um, so that's where a lot of the affordability numbers also, um, come into.
And one thing that jumped out at me, looking at the numbers, is that it, it showed our population decreasing over the last ten years. And we all know that that's not correct. So the, the importance of getting accurate census is, is, is really jumps out at me now, the more I, I'm involved in this and I see how important it is for the town to spend more time promoting the census too, cause it drives everything, all of our finances and everything's driven by the census.
Because it's showing, for what they're showing here, what the actual cost, you know, figures around it, uh, it's way off, I mean.
Yes. I, I agree, and I, I brought it up to Wyatt in one of our meetings, that I, I said, this cannot be right. And, uh, he defaulted that, you know, we go by census numbers and it's all the data that can go by, but, uh.
No, no one's put any, uh, better data out there, so we're, we're kind of, uh, stuck with it. Um, but we do usually, um, have a, um, conversation in the very beginning. I know we talked about it, um, earlier, earlier on in the plan process. We get the numbers from Census, cause there isn't really any other data source out there at this level. Around, recently, uh, we've noticed that some of the Census data for some, some of the smaller towns, not the most accurate. Like you said, the chances of the Town of Ravenel decreasing, well, probably, probably pretty unlikely. Um, we've noticed some of the other municipalities, Han, City of Hanahan decreased by like eight thousand people. We're like, they just put in this big old development, that's probably not accurate. So, uh, we just, we give those precedent examples, just be like, all right, but we'd have to report on some numbers. So, um, we do, um, talk about that, um, but there is a small disclaimer that we just kinda provide upfront. We're not gonna obviously include it, you know, every single example in the plan, but, um, just keep that in mind. It's, um, you know, we're, it's only as good as what we can, you know, go from Census, so. Just encourage everyone to participate in the Census.
Absolutely.
That's, that's all that really matters.
Okay. All right, any, any discussion, any further discussion? All right, if no further discussion, we'll call for a vote.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Cochran?
Aye.
Ms. Singleton?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Passes for she.
That passes, thank you very much. Okay, uh, moving on, do we have any public comments?
Angelina?
Uh, so, um, my name is Angelina Stappo, I would, and we're here with some communities, you already made us all these flyers, uh, coming Saturday, I just wanted to give you a little more, um, um, information about the event. Uh, we are organizing, this is our fourth year now, with partnership with the owners of Wideaway Coffee Shop, which is located here next to C D S and, um, Good Lion. Um, we are, um, purchasing the groceries from the store, so we don't use the food bank. We are actually buying, um, meat and, um, produce, everything is from, afresh from the store. Um, we are serving close to one hundred families from Ravenel and also from Hollywood. Um, we are providing, um, we are assisting people who are really need, like seniors and low-income families. Uh, we have, uh, partner with local, um, with the senior center as well, so we can have, um, information on and profile of the people who come to receive this assistance. Um, while saying this, I just wanted to give more, um, information to people who might be interested. Uh, if you have neighbors and you know family that are struggling right now, um, the occasion is fourth of July, and, uh, we are going to do a grill, uh, everything that we're gonna provide is gonna be for the grill, like the grumpy, the hot dogs, uh, corn cup, and everything you can think about. So, um, with partnership with some of the, uh, local businesses. So what we are looking is to partner, more partners, uh, with donations, uh, local businesses, individuals, families, whoever want to participate, every donation is non-deductible. Um, and also, uh, if you have any information I can give you, it's after the meeting. But I wanted to say, uh, thank you to all of you for, um, supporting us, and, uh, it's a teamwork. We cannot do it by ourselves, um, and thank you so much. So if you have any questions, please, uh, possibly after the meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public sign-up?
No, that's it.
Okay.
Well, I don't, did, Mike, did you want to?
No, I, uh.
Okay. And Mr. Anderson, did you want to? Okay.
Okay, um, Town Council comments? Nobody? I'm gonna, I'm gonna, just gonna touch real quick to thank Wyatt for his time and, and efforts that he's put into this. This started back on eleven twenty-one with a joint council and planning and zoning, um, workshop. Uh, on two-six, Megan and Wyatt, uh, presented an overview of the process and timeline of the comp plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, and then on two-twenty, Future Land Use Workshop was held. On three-six, Wyatt with the COG gave a presentation during the planning and zoning meeting. Discussions included input from the public. Five-twenty-three, Comp Plan, five-year, uh, public hearing was properly noticed in the post and courier. Six-five, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved the resolution to recommend approval to, uh, council. Six-twenty-four, uh, which is today, public hearing and first reading. So at seven-twenty-nine, next month's meeting, we'll have the second reading. It's a lot of work going into that, we do appreciate, um, your efforts. If no further discussion, no further comments, you get a motion to adjourn?
I course I will. We better adjourn this meeting.
To the second? All in favor? Aye. We adjourn. Oh, sign the minutes, please.